Okay.
Take a quick look at these while we're talking.
They plan to take that shed down?
The shed has been transmitted to you for review of their work.
Yep, okay.
We'll move it.
Okay, it is 7:01 and I'm going to call the June 26 Planning Board meeting to an order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for June 12th and June 18th.
I'd like to postpone that a little bit, one more member's reading.
Okay.
Can we do that?
We can certainly do that. We can actually take it up next time if you like on that at 10.
Well, there's three sets of them, so...
So you'd rather circle back to...
Yes, so direct at the end.
Okay. So you want to table that until later?
To a table until later, please.
Okay, you make a motion to that.
I'd like to motion that we table approval of the minutes for the last three meetings until two more members have a chance to do a quick review.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we move right on to an approval not required. The applicant is Mary Ellen Malloy, Trust of 43 Church Street, nominee trust, that must be trustee, to divide 7.49 acres, one lot into three building lots located at 43 Church Street, Woods Hole, and... Do we have any comments from the staff on this? Do we have any questions?
I would just say that this shed has, that's on the lot line, has to be moved. Other than that...
Shall we call on Mr. McGrath then, who...
Yeah, to find out.
Sorry, I don't remember. Oh, yes, that'll be read.
Okay.
I'll be happy to add it as a note to the file.
Yeah, okay, yeah. With that condition, I'd move it.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
A question, I think we've seen this plan several times. Has there been any changes to the lines?
Michael.
No.
Okay. Because we've studied it very carefully in the past.
We have, yes. But we have a couple of board members... Well, Paul, I don't think you've seen it before.
No.
But you have, I believe, Doug.
I don't think I've seen this, no.
You haven't seen this one, okay.
I think I was missing, absent, missing in action the last time I was here because I don't recall.
So Jim and I are the only two who can say, "Oh, yeah, this is the way it was," right? Love it.
But I have no problem with it. Plenty of lot size.
Absolutely.
Any non-conformities except for that shed are already existing, so...
Well, the big thing was, as they came before us, is that they wanted to cut through the stone wall to create an entrance to the new lot. Did you men... Did you hear that, Paul?
I'm sorry?
They came before us before to be able to cut through the stone wall to create another entrance to the new lot.
They just built that stone wall, didn't they?
Yes. There was a new owner who built the stone wall. Am I doing all right, Michael? Why don't you give, since there are two new members who haven't seen it, give a quick...
My name is Michael McGrath. I work for Holmes and McGrath. I'm a registered professional landscape surveyor. My firm drew the plan. This is the Whitney Estate. It's over seven acres on Church Street. And the bottom line is that we filed to divide this into three conforming lots. The lots are in an 80,000 square foot minimum upland area. They are conform to that. They all have a minimum average width of 200 feet and they all have required frontage. The previous donor had built a large denitrification septic system, so there's an easement shown on the plan. The Board of Health has given granted approval to have it be a shared system. In order to create driveways, we filed and received approval from the Historic Districts Commission and from the Planning Board under the scenic roads provisions of the town bylaws. So they've actually built a portion of the driveway serving the most northernly lots, so now it's appropriate that we submit the plan and we'd ask the Board to draw the approval not required. I agreed earlier that there's a shed on one of the lot lines and we'll add a note that that shed will be removed. Are there any questions I can answer?
Okay. Does anybody see any problem with this? Okay.
My final question is, how do they share these, the denitrification system? How's that work?
In order to share a denitrification system, the Board of Health has to approve that there's a set of documents that get recorded at the registry. There has to be a legally enforced mechanism that allows for the operation, maintenance, and the development of a replacement cost. So the first time it gets conveyed, there's a certain amount of money that's put in a fund to pay for, for instance, the replacement of pumps, which is probably the component that'll wear out the quickest.
I presume they're going to build a house in the snow in the most lot?
Yes.
And then they, would they drain it or have to pump into this system?
No. Well, it depends on where they locate the house. Previously, there was a pump station designed for the existing residence that's along the northernly lot line, but it was never installed. If they build a new house, there is a way for them to get it to flow by gravity, but most likely it'll be a pump.
And there'll be agreement from this property owner to accommodate them.
All three lots will be served by that denitrification, by that denitrification septic system.
Okay. That's actually not under whether we subdivided or not.
Point of order, yeah. I was going to raise that as a point of order. The only thing we're looking at is how the adequate sizes, adequate frontages, adequate setbacks. And the only issue I had was there wasn't an adequate setback on that shed, other than that.
But in a way, it is sort of valid, though, because we're looking at whether you actually can put them in across property lines or...
Right.
Yeah, that's come up, I think.
No, no, that's, that's the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner. All we're looking at is, is that show three viable building lots where the lines are drawn.
Who cares where it goes?
And who cares where they put the septic, how they do it. That's not our call.
I think one of the things we'll do as soon as we get a breather is we'll, one of the courses we're going to teach here in the fall is Introduction to the Subdivision Controlling. And I know a lot of other boards throughout the cave have asked for the approval not required process and all the little intricacies of that. And I think that's going to be offered sometime in October or November, because who might be the instructor?
Couldn't guess.
Well, I guess that, and then we'll get into some of the intricacies. We can recommend to the board tonight that there's adequate frontage on a public way, a pertinent dimension, and that the plan is entitled to your endorsement.
Okay. Now, Rich, you were going to make a motion.
I made the motion that we...
You did, I, okay.
Okay, I made the motion.
Then I need a second, correct?
I will second.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded that we approve of the approval not required. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Camille.
All right, so we move on to the discussion of the Wind Energy Systems Draft zoning bylaw. And what we are going to do tonight is, the first, in the first instance, is to review the comments that we heard last time. The purpose of this is to see whether we agree, disagree, want to do any major changes, not so major changes. So I'm looking for comments or just a, let's skip it because it's not important. And I will remind the newer members that when we go to a public hearing, we hear the comments of the public. But we don't always agree with those comments. What these comments are for is to allow us to know how the public is thinking, to perhaps gain a viewpoint or an insight that we didn't get just amongst ourselves when we put a new bylaw into place or revise a bylaw. So that is the purpose of the public hearing, is to get the input of the public. We do not need to agree with them. We may agree with them, and sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. So I just wanted to give you that introduction as to how we're looking at these. So I want to go down in the order of these comments that we heard at the last meeting. The first comment, is there a reference to municipal uses in the draft? Brian, is there a use, first of all?
Well, I think what that commenter was referring to was the current zoning bylaw regards to certain districts that allow for any municipal purpose. It's allowed in public use zones, business zones. And I think to address that, if you look at both the wind energy systems prohibited portion of the bylaw and the wind energy systems allowed, you see that there's a reference in... And Richard will know what I'm talking about here as an attorney. Any provisions or requirements of this chapter, to the contrary, notwithstanding. No wind system shall be constructed unless it comes to you. So what that means is, this is the only section that's germane. So if there's a reference in the zoning bylaw that allows all municipal purposes, it doesn't make any difference because any provisions or requirements to the zoning chapter, to the contrary, notwithstanding, becomes... So that only takes care of any, perhaps municipal issue, any kind of other interpretation issue. Because this is clear and precise that this section pertains to all wind energy systems. Any other sections of the zoning bylaw have no standing. Is that all right?
Doug?
Does that mean that we actually have control over municipal wind?
It would mean that if the municipality would be put in a turbine, it would require a special permit for this. Notwithstanding any, notwithstanding any other section of the zoning bylaw, as no standing, this is the section that I stand.
Would that, would that also apply to other governmental agencies that consider themselves exempt?
It wouldn't apply to any state or federal agencies. It would apply to a municipality. It would apply to something like the Regional Transit Authority. The Regional Transit Authority put a turbine on the dents, that is, maybe it actually got a special permit for that dents. But the Steamship Authority has, is a state agency that has municipal, and it's, actually a state agency that has exemptions. So it really depends on how they set the state agency up, and federal agencies are viewed.
Does anybody else have a question?
Just, this is a significant difference that the language, it wasn't in the old windmill bylaw.
Again, it clarifies the existing bylaw, not by going, making all these changes throughout the bylaws. Scratch this. It says, "Any provisions or requirements of the zoning bylaw, to the contrary, notwithstanding." The only thing that has standing is, is cleans it up on one of those.
Okay. Additionally, I think there's one point of clarification that I think the board and others out there listening might need. How does this apply to those that are covered under the Dover Amendment?
I think those other institutional uses, it has to be fact-based inquiry. If I have a Dover Amendment use such as a church, I sense there's no special permit coming down. I might have another Dover Amendment use that's educational use or claims an educational exemption. I think that Dover Amendment use is going to have to really demonstrate that it advances their educational mission. And I mean, truly, such as the Woods Hole research, their educational mission is climate energy. And so to a certain extent, they may argue that this is part of their educational mission process, whatever. If I were the, an educational foundation that did research on marine biology, I might have a more difficult time demonstrating that a turbine advances my educational mission. So the short answer is some, I think, religious uses. We don't regulate God. Other educational or agricultural uses, it's going to be dependent on what comes to mind.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions in regard to that comment?
There's a, right now being negotiated, new international trade agreement whereby foreign corporations who set up business operations in this country would be exempt from our laws. And, oh, yeah, you better pay attention. You don't, you gotta stay awake to this stuff. It hasn't passed yet and it's going to be a treaty, so I suppose Congress has to enact it. But that would mean that if a Japanese company should come here and buy some land and create a factory, would they possibly have the right to simply put up a wind turbine that they purchased from another Japanese company and not even have to come to us? And that would be under federal treaty. So I assume that we would have no control over that either.
I don't believe the board regulates interstate commerce or international treaty.
Right. So what that means is, excuse my politicking, we ought to be paying attention and let our people in Congress know, we don't want that kind of a treaty to go forward.
Is that being debated now?
It's being negotiated now by, I believe, our Department of Commerce. That's one of the things that's being discussed. And I think it's something that we all ought to be alert to because, you know...
Well, anyway, I think now...
There's a story, excuse me, in the New York Times about this just yesterday. That's the only reason I know about it.
So I think we're now clear on an answer to the municipal uses question that was raised. And just, yeah, Doug?
Well, I think this first comment was by Mr. Ford, and he had another concern about the 200-kilowatt limit. I think he thought that was too high.
That's the next one.
He also, oh, excuse me. Okay, right, that's also him. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the next comment is that a 200-kilowatt unit may be too large for residential areas, for example, AG double A. And Doug, you obviously wanted to comment.
I would just, I just didn't realize. I thought that was just, his comment was the only one there.
Okay.
Didn't realize he had...
Would you like to introduce this, Brian?
Just so you know, if you look in your definition of small and large wind energy systems, the largest wind energy system that would be allowed in a AG double A zoning district of this current draft is 60. And large systems, 60 and above, up to 200, are only allowed in public use or industrial zones. So this concern is valid because the board recognized it and incorporated very small turbines in AG double A districts.
So his comment is...
Our answer to that question is, yes, they are too large.
Yes, they are.
And we're not going to allow them, right. On the, on the other hand, someone else said that 100-kilowatt systems are too large. But on the other hand, several people expressed the opinion that this didn't get in here, but that this was too restrictive. The same people that were saying that the 51 percent requirement was too restrictive, the same people were saying that the, was too restrictive on the size. So that's good because what we've picked is a number that doesn't please everybody, but might just be able to get something done here and, you know, can always be changed later.
Okay, well, my question based upon this public comment is, do we want to change anything about the way we currently have it, which is 60 for an AG double A? And only in public use and, oh, I just froze. Public use in LIC can...
All industrial districts and public use districts can have from 60 up to 200. All the zoning districts, it's 60 and more.
So I think we've clarified and answered his...
The other, other fact that, that this commenter is not taking account of is that we are going to be developing performance standards. And so with the performance standards, even in industrial zones, we may determine that a particular site is not suitable for a 200-kilowatt. So that, that's going to be dealt with on later sections as to, when we get down to specifics, what is too large and what is, you know, acceptable.
So our comment right now in looking at this is currently we choose not to make any changes in what we already have in our draft bylaw.
So far.
Okay. Next, what criteria did the board use to develop small to large, in quotes, category of turbine? Clarify classification criteria, why only accessory use? Okay. That's a number of questions together. And again, I'm going to go to Brian so that he can refresh.
You used your elected official status, what you know today, based on what you know today, and applying the cautionary principles of primordians, and based on comparative criteria such as the 100-kilowatt turbine on Woods Hole Road. Remember, we started out, I think, much larger. We came, the board's determination was we would rather, in our judgment, we were more concerned. So you went down to 60 and 200.
As a...
That's your...
Limiting in the two categories.
That's my recollection in that you discussed it, you read the literature, you based it on your experience, and came to a decision as elected officials. This is where you're going to draw a line and say?
It's not any kind of an exact science that we're dealing with here, and we have to use our best judgment to what would be essentially a compromise between competing interests in the public. That's not only good policy, but it's also good politics, since we have to get this through town meeting. And let's be candid about it. We want to be able to present something that most town meeting members will be able to see the reason in. And, you know, at the same time, it reasonably balances the need to protect people against the adverse effects of it as against the rights of people to develop their property by using the technology and the need for society for that technology to be developed.
Okay, I would also make the comment that with all the documents that we have up in the planning office, when you look at the various categories, they're all over the place, as to what they call small, what they call medium, large, industrial. Those classifications are just all over. So that being the case, it really gives us, there's no official, this is a small.
In our own local experience, we know that 1.3 megawatt is too big.
1.65.
1.65 megawatt is too big. So from 1.6 megawatt to 200 kilowatt, there's a lot of space there. So that's why some people are saying we're being too restrictive on that size, because there is a lot of space there. But on the other hand, we want to be cautious, be, you know, taking a baby step here, and we can always increase that if the technology improves and there's a case to be made for...
Doug?
I think there was one more aspect of this person's comment was, why only the accessory use? And he followed up with, why limit the electric output? And are they tied together? And what was our thinking? I think that was the crux of his question on that one. Steve Leighton?
Yeah. If you go back to when we first started discussing this, it goes to the, our reaction to the larger turbines and the fact that, especially in the case of the web turbine, they are selling 95 percent of the power using only 5 percent of it. And we didn't want that situation to come about again, where essentially we have a power generator here that, to be sold into the commercial market. At least we don't want to deal with this now until we have more experience with it. Our experience so far has not been very positive. Yeah, Rich?
But that same commenter, I think, believe, I believe was the same fellow made the very salient point, is that we do not have a similar restriction on solar generation. And how do we justify that?
Okay.
And that's going to need some thought, because that's certainly going to be an issue that comes up before town meeting. And I don't think we want to be putting that onus on people that have already installed solar systems or on any new solar installations. So I think...
There's a huge difference there between the two technologies.
Well, except in terms of the reasoning, I mean, we are going to be controlling size. We're going to be controlling effects and performance standards. So what is the reason, if you're controlling for those in other ways, what is the reason for, I mean, I, I'm the one that said, I thought that the reason we were doing this is because, you know, if 51 percent establishes a primary use, anything beyond, anything over 51, 49 percent becomes a primary use. But then this issue come up with solar, and I can't see, if we're just simply basing it on the standards for defining what is accessory under the bylaw, then solar panels become, exceed, that exceed 51 percent of being sold offsite, they are no longer accessory either.
That is a comment that is outside of what we are doing now. The title of this is a wind energy system. Solar does not produce wind, so...
It produces energy.
It produces energy, but this is not an energy system bylaw. This is a wind energy system bylaw. We may come to the point where we want to do some regulations of solar. Wind has a larger zone of effect out there than solar does, as far as I know.
Yes, but, but, but here's the point. The point is that we are going to be dealing with those larger effects to other sections of the bylaw. And the reason for, yes, we're going to be dealing in size restrictions, we're going to be dealing with performance standards.
In this bylaw that refers to wind energy?
Yes.
I'm going to call on Brian, because this is going to keep going cycling here.
Okay, again, I think first comment that right now you're regulating wind energy systems, that for, stay focused with that, it could be stated that a solar array would be limited to the accessory use that's on the books today with regards to 30 percent lot coverages. There are other variables that affect solar arrays that don't affect turbines. Also, I think the intended impacts of turbine are different, a different technology than panels. Again, remember, today, the windmill bylaw is for an accessory use, so it is today. You're just simply following 30 years of town policy.
I'm just saying, this is going to come up, and we better have some answers.
Oh, we have the comment and we have some answers.
Okay.
We gave some thought upstairs, we've discussed it, and we think right now the board is in a good position with regards to what you are regulating today. And I think there are other criteria in the bylaw that restrict solar panels to an accessory use given the... You know, they have to maintain their lot coverages, their setbacks, all those things that make it really a structure that is more in tune with some of the classical zoning criteria that we employ. So I think what I'm arguing for you at town meeting should be questioned. So I think what I'm arguing for you at town meeting should be questioned.
I'm playing the devil's advocate here, and this is going to come up at town meeting, and we better be prepared for it.
And I agree with you, and that's great. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments in regard to this comment? Jim?
I was just amazed that Richard and I agree on almost 90 percent of this issue. The last one I think-
Make sure we get to the 10 percent.
The last one, I, I think that we have enough information about the difference between the impacts of wind turbines and solar arrays, and I think we'll be comfortable with it.
Yeah. So we're not going to carry those comments further into making any changes, then, it sounds like?
Not at this time.
Well, that's what we're looking at, at this time. Okay?
Well, I don't want to jump off on one comment, but this commenter's comments were echoed by like five other people. So at the end, I think we should have a, a chance to review the entirety of the comment.
Sure, let's move on through and-
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, that's a big one. If we decide we want to change from accessory, that is huge as far as what we've already got in place, and I just want to point that out.
Right.
So it's a big one, if we make a change there. Next, the public outreach area may be too small, Woods Hole Research as an example.
Is that right?
What is the public outreach definition?
Right now, it's four times the system height, which is the tip of the blade. So if you have a thousand foot tip of the blade, then the public outreach area is 4,000, not 4,000, 4,000.
At one meeting, we discussed changing that. Is that the result of the change?
Um, yeah, I recall, I think the board was good with the four times the system height.
Well, we did.
I remember bringing it up, but I don't remember what the ultimate vote was. If we wanted to double it.
Well, we did, we did vote to increase it from what typically would be the outreach.
Well, the typical was 300 feet, about us to about us of the 300 feet. We asked the board whether you wanted to have a public outreach area.
Yeah.
In addition to that, that didn't grant party of interest standing to those other individuals. That's how we brought it up.
Right.
So you're actually going much further out than a special permit under the state law would require you to do so. One commenter thought you was going a little further, because even four times the system height, that person was just outside, she was affected, she claims to affect from Woods Hole. So it's a comment, right now, we're, I'm comfortable with four times the system height. Maybe she wants to get the word out there to that number of people who belong to periphery here.
So can we clarify, do you know offhand what the height of that Woods Hole Research?
Uh, yes, uh, 100 kilowatt. I don't know precisely. I'm estimating, you know-
120, I think.
100.
120, I think.
120.
Tom Jones is a senior-
She might have a point, because, I mean, she has said she was 900 feet, and I understand, I work at her neighbor's house next door, and he told me last week that she's actually moving after 14 years there, and she's happy otherwise.
But, but, you know, wherever you draw a line, somebody's going to be unhappy. And that is based not on any malicious intent, but simply the different, uh, levels of tolerance different people have. So, you know, you know, you have to draw a line someplace. If we said now it's going to be 500 feet, well, then if it was somebody who's 503 feet, they're going to come in and they're going to have a, a beef.
Well, it's true, but I mean-
You know, so, no, I mean, what, what, what we're talking about is, is a, an area that's larger than is required under state law, under state standards. So, you know, that's a reasonable standard. You're, you're going to take the, the case of one person's sensitivity to that? I, I don't see that, that that's a valid, uh, criterion. Uh, you know, I mean, some people, well, we, we have a tourist economy, people come down here to sit on the beach and get a suntan, but some people can't do that. But, you know, we don't discriminate, you know, they don't say we're discriminating against them, you know, because they, they, they're more sensitive to sun than other people, because we have open beaches, you know? It's, uh, I don't think that's a valid, uh, criterion, that one person has complained about one turbine that, uh, and, and again, there may be citing issues there that we can be dealing with in terms of our, uh, performance standards that would address those concerns. There, there may be special, uh, geographic features, geological features between that person's house and, and this unit that enhance some effects. And, and those are the kinds of things that we would probably be addressing when we require, you know, data on performance of, of these turbines. So, you know, I don't think we change that. I, I think, you know, again, start drawing 400-foot circles, and they'll start, you know, making them into 500-foot circles or 600-foot circles. Pretty soon, you're going to zone these things out of existence entirely. So, and that's not going to be our objective here. That's what some people want us to do.
I thought it was just for notification.
Notification.
Okay, so then notification, that means people have right, we're recognizing that those people are impacted, then we're increasing the zone in which people are going to be taking us to court for, for permitting something.
Or increasing the public engagement so that we have less problems.
Okay, let's, Jim?
Uh, I, I think we need to, uh, reach out further, and I, and I, what I'd like to do is, just as an example, our normal building height is 35 feet, and that goes to a relationship of just a couple of feet away, you know, 300 feet away, and that all works fine for a long time. We're going hundreds of feet or 100 feet, and it, and it, it really has to be a much further outreach. And when we're doing a special permit, it talks about impacts of the neighborhood, various, various different impacts, there's a whole list of them. And I think I'm in favor of going out as far as reasonable. I'm not saying, I'm not defining it one number, but we could come to a, I'm not afraid of going a little bit further, is what I'm saying.
But Jim, what is reasonable? The state says what, Brian?
It's, um, the abutter, and the abutter to the abutter within 300 feet. So here's the very subtle difference you need to be aware of. Doesn't mean all 300-foot abutters. I might have a piece of property here, and here's the next lot right here, 100 feet of frontage. And there's another lot here, 100 feet of frontage. So it's the abutter, and the abutter to the abutter within 300 feet. You don't go out to the third abutter. So you may be that, under the state law, you might go out 200 feet.
So in this way-
Then you want to address this issue, um, you can, you can put a minimum in that, regardless of the size of your turbine. Let's say you have a 60-foot-high turbine, uh, turbine, okay. You may want also put a, a floor in saying that the minimum polygraph reach area shall be X, and we can try to work on that.
I, I like to approach a minimum and a maximum. Makes sense.
Well, if we say, I, I, I say the minimum at 400 feet is fine, and that doesn't prevent us from sending out notices to people if we want to engage. We're always entitled to, to, to decide that this application might, might warrant sending out more notice than, than is required. Nobody can complain if we do that.
Just, just like we've been doing on everything, that we're being cautious and dealing with new technology and trying to understand the changes, we've heard from various different hearings how this sound bounces off clouds and airwaves and comes down, goes off geographic things, we, you know, all over the place, changes on temperature. I think we should-
Jim, Jim, let, let me-
Be, be careful of what we're doing here.
Because I'm thinking like a lawyer, I'm thinking like a lawyer here.
I know.
If you give people a right, and in this case, the right is to weigh in on this particular project because they are within this notice zone, they have that right, so that if they disagree with our permitting at this, this one, even though they are, let's say it's a 500-foot zone now we have, and they are 490 feet away, and they're the only people within that 500-foot radius that disagrees, they'll take us to court. And it might be that they're taking us to court because they're simply anti-wind, having nothing to do with any real, uh, issue that they have, but they'll still take us to court. I, I think we want to limit that as much as possible. We're already going over what the state requires, so I don't see how anybody can say we're being too restrictive there. And, and people who can, people can get this notice, people who are interested can get this notice, people, we can, we can advertise, this is what we're doing, uh, people who are interested can come in, but I don't want to be giving rights, you know, abutter rights to people beyond what is reasonable. And I think to do that beyond 400 feet, I, I think 400 feet might even be excessive, but I, I can go along with that, because we are trying to reach a compromise here.
Well, Rich, you're talking about 400 feet for that one turbine that were on Woods Hole Road, but there are various heights there. So there are two ways of approaching it, and one is this, four times the height to the top of the blade. The other one is a distance, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on this, Paul.
I can see the, the issue. Anyone can come to a public hearing, you know, but the legal issue that Richard raises is, concerns me a little bit, that if we make it too definitive, we might create a can of worms. Anyone can come. And if we follow the state law, or even degrade the state law, I don't see how it can be faulted for that. But if we make it too restrictive, you miss somebody, then you start getting into trouble. And that's what a concern, that's a concern I would have. But there's no reason not to follow state law, and if we want to be cautious and raise it a blade higher or something like that, uh, that would be totally acceptable, but I'm a little concerned about the legal issues being raised here, because we don't need a lawsuit. And I'm not a lawyer, but, uh, you want to avoid those sorts of things.
Well, I think what I'd like to point out is that anybody can sue in this country.
True.
So I don't think we're inviting or denying a lawsuit.
But you don't have to make it easier.
No, but that's what I'm saying. I don't think we're inviting it either by saying, okay, we recognize that the impact is further, and maybe we want to extend it even further than the four times. Or maybe we don't, maybe we feel that's fine.
I don't think we have to do more than the state law requires, right?
Well, we are doing more than that.
I know we are, but I don't think we really have to.
We don't have to, no.
But if we're doing more than that, we're being cautious, and that can, and I think that's a good thing.
And we certainly don't want to go the extra mile to do more than the state law, which is what this comment is getting at.
Go the extra mile.
And again, you know, there are people out there who are just simply anti-wind. I'd suggest, I'm, I'm going to invite, the next time we have a discussion, uh, one of the senior scientists from Woods Hole Research to, to come and give his comment. In fact, I think he's going to be preparing some comment for us anyway, I spoke with him recently. Um, and, you know, you'll get the other side of that question in terms of what was economic and necessary for that institution to decide to go to wind. We're, we're going to have to be doing some balancing here. We're not getting into a zero tolerance mentality, so.
That's, that's not what's coming up here.
Yeah, I know.
What is coming up here is, how far do we have to go to, if you want to, to be politically correct within the town of Falmouth, if you want to call it that? How far do we have to go to be responsive to people who are likely to be affected? And then we're calling that with the planning board. We may get a lot of pushback in either direction on it.
But, but let me, let me give you a for instance. Now, we're going to be developing, I, I, I hope, some fairly inclusive performance standards that are going to be addressing all kinds of issues. Now, it well might be that somebody who is outside of this notice area, uh, nonetheless would be within the range of effects that we are going to deny anyway, that, that we are going to limit anyway. So those people would be protected in that respect, because if, you know, if the effects reach to the 400 feet and beyond the 400 feet, then, uh, if, if we're talking about 100-foot system, then that person's going to be protected, because our performance standards is going to prevent the harm to them. Uh, that person will also have a right to come in and comment at a public hearing, but that person just simply wouldn't have the right if the evidence that we accept shows that these adverse effects aren't going to go beyond 350 feet, and, uh, we, we then modify that the project accordingly, that person doesn't then have to come in, have the right to come in and sue us.
I think what we need to understand here, Rich, is that whatever we do is going to be an arbitrary decision.
Yes.
Okay.
And-
And so we have to get agreement with the board as, amongst the members of the board, as to what our arbitrary decision is going to be.
And again, I, I want to make the point that the farther out you, you draw these circles, the less and less likely you are to get anybody to develop a wind turbine system, and therefore, you're going to retard the development of wind technology, because you are limiting the amount of land that can be used.
So I think we need to take your comments and think about it, because until we get this in its final shape, we still have the ability to change it back to, to two times even if we want to, or enlarge it to 10 times if we want to. We have that ability to put a different number in.
Personally, I might think four times is too much, but I'm willing to go along with that in order to get this done.
Okay, and so that's why I'm saying it's arbitrary, and we have to get the agreement of at least the majority of the board, of the board members as to where we're going to land on that arbitrary number.
I just found a way I can agree with Richard on this very clearly. I'll go along with his, his distances, because he left the door open. If someone can prove that they're being adversely affected from sound by some kind of measurement that's also going to be restricted in their, that opens the door back up again, and I think we just found a middle ground there that, that'll work.
Well, we're going to have to be looking very closely at those performance standards. And I'm willing to go along with some fairly stringent performance standards, because that's the way we will get the technology to improve.
I think that's where we're going to come from.
I agree with that.
Okay. Um, and we have to move along, or we'll never get through this tonight. And the next one does refer to exactly what both of you are looking forward to. Look at the technical performance aspects to regulate these. Small turbines can be louder than large.
Good comment, that's exactly what you're going to get.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we do performance.
Yeah, so that's what we don't have yet, we're looking forward to getting, and that is going to be more controlling.
And again, that's where that small wind certification council might help us if we find out that-
Reach out.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think you just have to define the performance standards, have determined by the manufacturer. Somebody has to define what the performance standards are. Whether it's a manufacturer proposed a particular device, they ought to certify the performance standards, that should be tied into somebody doing it.
And this independent certification council might be a good barometer for them too, rather than just what their own company's claims are, an independent council.
You can't leave it out there, who's going to do it, you really have to find it.
That's fine.
How?
But if, again, if they certify it, they say it won't make the noise, and it doesn't do it, they put it up and it does, they're in trouble.
Right.
I mean, so they have to, they have to live by their standards, you know, they, they can say, well, we didn't take into effect the, the topography or the wind or the, the humidity or whatever, but guess what? If it's outside the parameters, they're on the hook.
Well, I like what Doug has said, because manufacturers do tend to-
Be conservative.
-bump up their people's expectations on performance, I think. So I like-
And they focus on the fine print.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So maybe we want to do that. Next, 51 percent may be too restrictive in order to finance a new turbine. Donation of excess power may be allowed. Comments?
Well-
I'm going to leave this off, Paul.
I made a comment at my first meeting.
I know you did.
Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the operational aspects of the bylaw. I think we can put in a lot of things like setbacks and nuisance and zoning requirements and things like that, but I'm not sure we should be determining what the operational characteristics are for that particular unit. That could change. It could change based on new technology, uh, perhaps blade reconfiguration or some new, uh, device that comes down the road. This is an evolving industry, and if we limit it too much, uh, I think it's just going to defeat the whole purpose of having a bylaw. I was intrigued by the comments made by Mr. Swick last time, that he is actually donating a portion to a particular charity. I thought that was pretty interesting. I didn't know he could do that, but if you limit 51 percent, you would be avoiding that option too. But I'm just not comfortable with us defining the operational characteristics of a turbine. The location and all the other requirements are there from the planning, planning standpoint, that ought to be sufficient.
Well, we defined 51 percent, I'm just going to refresh on this, because it's, it's greater than split in half, and that is how we define accessory. Because we do have, um, physical characteristics, but we don't have anything like this, so there was no way to define accessory. So there was no way to define accessory when the web turbine was permitted under our current bylaw because there's no definition of that kind of accessory.
I understand they use less than 10% on site.
I've been told it's five, but I don't know that how much.
I don't know what the exact number is, but it's less than 10%.
So this is one way we had of wanting to control the size a little bit so we didn't have a power plant scattered all over the place.
But these are so small, they're not going to be generating an awful lot of excess.
The ones that we have, that we're specifying here.
Bylaw is dealing with a very small turbine, not the web turbine.
And I understand that too. And again, this is another number that could be changed even up to the 11th hour without changing the bylaw, I believe. Does anybody else have comments on the 51%?
Well, I think what we're really looking at here is uses in different neighborhoods. And our bylaws are pretty protective about the uses and what's a primary use and a secondary use or an auxiliary use. And I think we're following the pattern of the way we, the way our bylaws work. And I think we need to do that. And I think to make an exception for energy production to throw out, you know, the way we look at things, it has to be studied real carefully. I'm not ready to do that. One of the reasons why we went for the accessory use is because we're saying we got residential neighborhoods and agricultural uses and everything. We really don't want energy uses as the primary use in those areas. And that's what I think our bylaws are set up that way. And for now, I think it's prudent to work that way until we learn more.
Okay.
You know, I don't like the limiting of the electricity.
Oh, I know you don't, yeah.
I'm still that, still of that opinion.
There's another way we could define what accessory means, and that would be what the business holds itself out as. I mean, I could be a farmer and I'm a vegetable grower and I have a few cattle and I use the turf product from those cattle to help fertilize my tomatoes. But on the other hand, I got some extra stuff that I sell to other farmers and gardeners. Does that mean that I'm a purveyor of fertilizer? No, I'm still a farmer and that's what I hold myself out as. And we're not getting into the business of permitting, on a special permit or otherwise, energy companies, but none of these people are going to be energy companies. They're going to be primarily another business and that's what they're going to hold themselves out as. If it may be that, and we're going to be pretty much in the permitting process restricting them in terms of size to meet their needs, projected needs. But if, you know, this is what I, what concerns me is if, as some of these people say, as the technology increases or their needs go down, perhaps they find some better way of insulating, some more efficient means of, more efficient machines to use, that they are now producing excess energy. That means they have to not produce it? I mean, did this?
What's their permit, Rich? We don't go back and say, oh, no, no.
Well, okay, but I think that's what's worrying some people.
I understand it is worrying, but they also don't understand how we operate.
All right.
So I don't see that as a worry. What I do see more as a worry is that a business would go in for the maximum that they could afford and have only a small fraction that they want to use themselves. What we were concerned about is, we started out at 75. We backed down on that because we were agreeing that, yeah, they probably should have the capacity, one, to grow, and two, to help defray the expense of the turbine.
Now, Doug would say, what's wrong with that? And I would agree with him in terms of policy. I'm just defending the existing 51% standard because what we're doing, as Brian says, is we're modifying an accessory use bylaw. And I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, legal definitions. What does accessory use mean? You know, accessory use does not consume the primary use. So, okay, but I'm doing that not from policy concerns, energy policy particularly. I'm doing that just from a narrow legalistic perspective. And so I'm just throwing out there another legalistic way of we could look at what does accessory mean? It means what the business holds itself out as, what it deals with the public as. Because when they're talking about selling power back to the grid, they're not holding themselves out to the public. They're not, people aren't coming to their site to buy electricity. They're coming to the site to buy wood products or cement products or whatever it is that is using the system. And so that would just be a different definition of what accessory means.
Jim?
I think we're going around and around here. But what I'd like to just point out to Richard and everybody here, we're looking at the makeup of this board and we're going to be handling the special permit. This, whoever this permit's going to be coming to us and they're going to be saying, you know, this is what we're going to do. And we're going to have a finding at that hearing, whether they're meeting our accessory use or not. And we have some discretion on those findings when we have that hearing. And we can listen to them and hear what they say. And if we want to find that they are not any more than accessory use, that's what we get to decide. And I think that gives us the control of the board to do that. And we can have differences of opinion, listen to what they want to do and have a finding at that board. They get their permit and move on. If they're coming in and we know they're using, they're selling 95% of it, I can tell you one person, I'm going to have a finding that I don't agree with that. But I think there's enough room in the language for us to move beyond kicking this back and forth all day.
Okay. Let's move on.
Okay.
Sure.
Please.
The country of Sweden has a lot of turbines, as you well know. And a colleague of mine recently came back from Sweden and he wrote along a thesis prepared by Eurobar University where they looked at the responses to turbines in, I think, six dozen locations and about 45 turbines varying in size from 150 to 1500 kilowatts. I thought it was kind of interesting. I have a copy of this report, I'll put it in file and I made a copy of the summary for everybody to look at if they're interested. And one of the conclusions they mentioned is that it may be necessary to assess the different types of landscapes when you evaluate a wind turbine. So we haven't even been talking about that. So I thought that was an interesting thing and I share this with the rest of the board.
Yeah, we're looking at topography and landscape too. But a lot is unknown. That's going to be quite handy, I think. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Somebody said that we should be looking for success stories, examples for town meeting of different sized turbines. Okay, fine. That's up to our staff to look for that and they said they were going to. So I think we don't need to spend any time. Pardon?
There are some.
Yes, definitely there are and they are going to be providing those. Okay? And there may be reasons that those are successful and we're having some problems too. Next, consider future efficiencies that may reduce power consumption below 51% that would affect accessory status. I think we kind of handled that. Once it's permitted.
We're not going to be meter police.
That's exactly right. If they can.
As long as that's clear.
If they replace their heating plant and have tremendous efficiencies there, we're not going to go back in and say, oh, no, you got to curtail that turbine. Absolutely, they can donate the power.
Well, they can sell it.
It's not mandatory.
We're not, we're not going to be power police, just like we're not bedroom police and we have a different role in life than that.
Good example.
Okay, so, I don't, does anybody else want to make any comments on that one? I don't think so, from what I'm seeing. Does the bylaw address the needs of institutions? For example, HUe and the hospital. Are the districts P U L I A enough? Do we care, I think is the answer, whether we address the needs of institutions? Is that something that we need to separate out from what we're doing in any way?
I think it depends on the design.
I wouldn't be surprised if someday there was some sort of a building-mounted wind turbine come along because they have a great wind resource down there. I suppose we should be prepared to look at that and think about it.
Well, there is a building near the airport. I know when I was sitting there waiting, they, wouldn't that count? 16 small turbines up on the roof spinning around.
Well, you know, we.
Brian has a comment on that too.
Yeah, if there's an educational institution or research institution that's not currently on public use, you have to tell me. Say, I would like to be public use and here's the deal. And that ultimately will be their decision. Of course, the campus is public use, hospitals, public use. A lot of it's already covered. But let's just say I'm an institution, I want to come to town and I want this facility that, you know, can see town.
And what would currently be the situation if one of those buildings down in Woods Hole decided they wanted to put up a facility? Is that permissible under what we're doing so far? I guess if it's small.
If it's small. If it's on public use, they could go up to 200.
Right.
Otherwise, they're restricted to 16 kilowatts.
Which is probably all that would fit on a roof anyway. And they don't have any other place to put a problem?
They don't.
Ultimately, if you need a zoning change, then concede town.
So that's the answer to that question. Is everybody satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Does the bylaw address institution exemptions? We already went through that with the first one.
As well as it can, right?
Yeah.
It's the same one.
Okay, the next one. The bylaw has a hostile tone for wind friendly town. We should not have the prohibitions first. The accessory use is only, is too restrictive. It will make the town onlookers in the future.
Well, this gets back to the basic, you know, problem we are facing. We've told town meeting for, you know, three town meetings now, let us work on this. We're going to work on, we're going to bring something back. I think it's incumbent on us to bring something back in November that we can sell and get, you know, fairly wide consensus on. So there are, this is, when they're talking about bylaw has a hostile wind turbine, that's a political question right there, a politically loaded question. So I think it's fair to address that politically, which is we need to get, make sure Falmouth is a wind friendly town by first getting a bylaw that we can put into place to allow wind turbines. Then we can change that as situations may require. I think that's the way to address that. I mean, I may agree with the sentiment there, but as a practical person, you know, I have to realize that we have to achieve some kind of balance, some kind of compromise to get this enacted at this town meeting. Otherwise, what are we going to do? If we don't get this enacted at this town meeting, what's our fallback? Another moratorium?
Can't.
So.
See you in April.
Right. We've got one more go in April. And if we can't get it passed by April, we are back to what we have.
We should be replaced.
Right. So I mean, so this is a political question when they're talking about we're a hostile town, not wind friendly. And the answer to that has to be a political answer. We've got to get something passed.
And we've got to put those prohibitions at the back of the bylaw.
And that's fine.
No, 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 because this is a bylaw that first sets up what is going to be allowed, what is not going to be allowed. Then, okay, once we've established that, and that's wind hostile or other people saying it's going to be too wind friendly, we're getting it on both sides on that. And once we've established that, then we put in the performance standards and the procedural requirements that we're going forward on. That's just the way you set up a bylaw.
Yeah, you're laying it out.
Right.
The roadmap, you're laying out initially. Yeah. Does anybody else have any further comments on that comment?
I think it's a case of wordsmithing, actually.
Yeah. And that's okay. What we've got is still.
We can do that.
Draft preliminary. Is there a provision for condominium associations or open space subdivisions in the?
That's not what it says. It says, is there provisions?
Yeah, I know what it says. Richard. The genesis of this question is, okay, we have homes, homeowners in a condominium association or a subdivision and this group of homeowners wants to put up a turbine. Can we allow them to do this to serve the group of condominiums or the group of homes?
Well, this is in a purely residential area. And they, it's not like a single home where they have a 60 watt, 60 kilowatt maximum. Do we allow 10 60 watt?
Because there are 10.
Because there are 10 units there? Or do we allow, we're not going to go up to 600 kilowatts, but do we allow them to share a 200 kilowatt? That's an interesting question.
I think there should be an exception for that type of good planning. If it fits.
If it fit, oh, yeah, if it fits. If it fits the area, the surrounding area, we want to work on that.
But what I'm more interested in is making something happen, see how it works. And then we can come in with a change of this nature.
Right.
So what specifically we're talking about is combining the electric meters for the accessory use. That's, that's a specific point you're saying.
Yeah.
It's all in one lot. I may not have an argument against that because the condominium is all in one lot.
Well, I mean, I think about tree tops, that's kind of across the pond.
So we could talk about that.
62 units, I think, in there.
We could, we could talk about that.
Leave the possibility open for exceptions, right?
If you have something like Falmouth, you're probably okay for all the outside power consumption, whatever they add, ten or eleven. I think if you have an open space subdivision of 10 single family house lots, I don't, I don't know how NSTAR is going to.
Right.
I don't see how that's going to happen. But the condominium question is good.
Well, let me ask you this. If you had, let's say you have a 10 subdivision, okay, I'm going to use, okay, a 10 subdivision.
10 lots.
10 lot subdivision where they have small lots because they have open space, you know, that's commonly owned. Under the bylaw, each homeowner would be entitled to come in to seek a permit for up to a single 60 kilowatt unit on his own half acre, let's say.
If they met the performance.
Right.
Rich, I got something to say to move this along. It's never going to happen with the energy management side from the network cards and all the doing. If somebody finds a way that they can do this and bring it to us, I'll be all in favor of listening to it. But NSTAR is not going to let it go. They can't manage the flow up and down, the change in winds. It's just impossible right now. So we're really getting way out there on addressing this issue on ifs, whats and maybes because this is not going to happen for a long, long time.
I'm pretty sure it can happen now. You can designate.
No, I'm saying, no, we can. But I'm saying the electric companies have to manage the flow and have backup. They just don't do it.
Right, but you get renewable energy credits for what your.
They would all have to be on one meter. And the wiring would all have to be combined. You're really talking about, we should talk to an engineer here about this before we go any further on this because I think this is way out there.
So what we're doing really is jumping ahead of where we want.
I'm just saying, I think it's already in place. So I'm just.
What's already in?
A system to make it viable for them. You wouldn't meter each house. What you would do is you'd have the turbine producing, dumping into the grid. Then you'd get your renewable energy credits from that and you could distribute them as you want.
They're not really using the power, they're just taking renewable energy credits. So you're doing an offset instead of doing it that way. Because you couldn't physically do it with the energy usage.
But with this, are we jumping ahead of where we should be with this initial bylaw?
Yeah, I think we are. I think we're getting out there.
Yeah, I think we're reaching.
But just the fact that it is a possibility that we could want that exemption.
I thought this was an interesting question.
I did too.
It is an interesting question.
Something that we want to have an answer to before we get to town meeting.
Well, and Brian is taking very good notes there right now.
See you in the future.
But we're dealing with tonight a lot of easy questions and a couple of hard ones.
Yeah, that's the truth of it. Is there an exemption for affordable housing? And no, there is not.
No.
The question wasn't, should there be?
That would be up to the Board of Appeals on our comprehensive.
All right, will there be incentive zoning to encourage efficiencies?
In the future.
Yeah.
Right now, you're a performance zoning role.
Yeah.
Think it one step at a time.
Yeah, so we're going to say maybe future.
Good comment. We're not there yet. Incentive zone.
Brian, is there going to be some mechanism where these that are good to look at, say in five years or so, will come back to us in some day?
I think the next town plan, we'll do a great.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
Again, good comment, good question.
Yeah.
Incentive-based zoning, great stuff.
Next time around.
Let's get the first one in.
Get the first step in.
Will other alternatives such as photovoltaic panels be subject to the 51% limit? We already handled that earlier.
Right.
They have the same end.
Yeah.
Have you all been up to the ice rink? Have you all been up to the ice rink?
Have not yet. I hear it's really spectacular.
It is. Although I gotta say, if I had a house on the hill above that, there are people who complain about solar farms.
Reflection.
And that would be something that somebody, I'm sure, would complain about if they had a house with their view of Buzzard's Bay. I don't sympathize with those people, but I'm just saying, that's something that somebody would be bemoaning about, you know?
When you drive across a desert.
What houses are on the hill above that?
I'm not saying there is, but I'm saying if there were a house out there.
Well, there isn't.
When you drive across a desert, you can see what looks like a lake.
But we're looking for a problem that doesn't exist with this one.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a great installation. I was really impressed, but...
Yeah. Okay, the next comment. The Met Tower data may be too expensive for small turbines. I don't think we're gonna argue that.
I think we can address that. I think we have in the next draft.
Okay.
Good comment. We can add a waiver provision for those small towers. For the rebuttable presumption, you need one, you can amend rebuttal presumption.
Okay. Paul?
The Met Tower is used extrapolating data anyway, 'cause they're not as big as the turbines. They take a reading and they extrapolate that for what they think they're gonna get anyway.
So it provides it within a range. Okay. Ken, oh, well, that's... Forget that one. Just wanted to know if written comments could be...
Public might wanna still hear it.
Okay. Can written comments be forwarded after this hearing? Yes, and we go on to the written comments received.
We've actually had a lot of questions. So I think now that you have opportunity, media here and I'll be, yes, you can submit comments to that draft. I think, you know, public hearing.
And the written comments that were received, the new bylaw is inconsistent with state policy for net metering.
That's right, it is.
Okay. We should regulate lot size setbacks and so forth, not energy consumption. And that's gonna be in the standards that we're putting in.
That gets back to the 51%.
Right.
Accessory use.
Mm-hmm. The wholesale electricity market is problematic. Net metering is not the wholesale market. I think it's a...
It's worth the thing. Right now, we have to the wholesale energy market. We'll go back and look at that, make sure it's consistent with that.
There is a comment to the effect that we should use the state-level model bylaw.
I'd never use anything state.
Right. We already decided no. This is us.
But in seriousness, we've looked at the state models, we've looked at the commission models, we've looked at other comparative examples and crafting something. Yes, we have used the state model.
Potentially, the person who made this comment was not aware of the full array of various model bylaws that exist in the planning office that have been taken into account for what we are doing. And it's just like the other one where, well, okay, how did we decide what was small and what was large? It's all over the place. So we're doing the best we know to do for the town of Falmouth.
We could use many more.
Mm-hmm. Ice throw machine failures have little justification for regulation, and there was some attached information.
I've been saying that all along. And I think the way that we deal with that is simply require insurance.
Yeah, okay.
And there's such little risk there that the insurance for covering that, you know, there's, you know, look at the potential for risk of a nuclear plant, which is a lot greater than the industry wants to let on. They can't cover that kind of damage, you know, loss with any amount of coverage.
Yeah.
You know, look at Fukushima.
Yeah.
But certainly, the kind of losses that you'd be looking at with ice throw or machine failure, blades falling off, you cover that with, like, we have automobile insurance.
Yeah, we've had a couple of turbines that blades have come off in a windstorm.
Well, you cover that with insurance.
Not in Falmouth, I'm not implying that.
You cover that with insurance. And that's what we do. We say you have to have a bond or you have to have insurance. And we can discuss what the likely coverage limit should be, but, you know, that's...
And then we have a letter from Levy Adams in regard to his testimony that he delivered at the hearing. So he was just summarizing what he already said there. So it appears we don't have any huge discrepancies right now, potentially with accessory. We may be looking at that further as to what kind of number do we wanna put a number on it? How do we wanna define accessory? Am I correct in that?
Well, we got a lot of comments saying that we're on the wrong track with the accessory and the 51%. I was considering asking us to reconsider our vote. I don't know if this is an appropriate time or if we should do more research, but...
We should have everybody present before we did that.
I agree with that.
And like I said, I agree with you in terms of policy considerations, but in terms of getting a bylaw passed, I'm not sure I do.
Right, well, maybe that's true, too.
And sometimes, after we get a bylaw passed, too, with the actual function of the bylaw, life calms down a little bit, too. And so other potentials become possible that would not have been possible when we first put a bylaw in place, because now there's experience. So I think...
I think the two questions, that I said, are the tough questions that we're dealing with here. One is, wrangling through this accessory use and how to deal with that question. The other one is, what do we do about condos and, you know, open space subdivisions? And some concern about how we're gonna be dealing with institutions.
Those, I think, the latter two, I think, we're not gonna deal with under this one. If we deal with accessory and we wanna change it from accessory, which we had 100% agreement that we wanted to keep it as an accessory use, so we did not have a standalone on one lot, that that was the major form of business on that lot, that was it. It was built for that. We started that way back in the beginning. We made that decision.
Again, you're gonna find people coming in who live in open space subdivisions. You've got three people there that wanna have turbines. Gonna allow all three?
I hear what you're saying, Rich. I think, as you said, we're going to have to try to get through what is the possible now.
Okay. All right.
What's next, boss?
(laughing) Right. Well, if we were not making any major changes by going through these comments, which it appears we're not, the huge major one is if we wanted to throw the word accessory out, that would just... It'd be a whole different animal.
What would redefine accessory?
We can define accessory as a percentage very easily. You just put another number in, it hasn't changed anything. Okay. Having said, no, we're okay with where we are right now for where we are right now, I think Brian has some copies of the newest iteration that he wants to pass out to us. And Brian, are we just...
If I had made some serious policy change here, kind of, with comments, I would have kept it on my hoof. I didn't wanna give it to you prior to your discussion that might have influenced your discussion. And if possible, what? And you'll see that now, the Socratic method kind of worked back some months ago, it's a bit called, you know, policies down, what are we regulating? Why are we doing this? What is our purpose? For now, we're at accessory uses, and we're debating and having a policy discussion shooting 51%. We started on 100. So you're gonna have that discussion, but the fundamental, it looks like, is still accessory use in the land. So what we've done here now is, you'll see, because now that you have these fundamental language policy questions in place, a lot of this now is going to be accelerated, because your... This bylaw now has your application requirements, the criteria for review, you have a height, setback. I'm gonna go back and go through this. Clearing, restarting your design standards, your safety, your environmental standards, your monitoring, your maintenance, your site planning details, your engineering details, your operational details, and your procedure for review, because that's all the can... That's all process and procedure. Part of it is, a part of this one, the last few months, really debating, discussing on yourself and getting a public policy question answered. So I'll just go through them very quickly. Nothing has really changed in the first two pages, except that, yes, I have the definitions in alphabetical order. We're going to be adding a few. You can see the DPA, the decibels will come up with that for you. The first two pages haven't changed, obviously, because that's what you have from hearing on, and we have the alphabetical orders. Now, starting on page three, you'll see now the criteria for review. You have your height. I just wanna breathe you tonight. Breathe this, take it in. We'll be discussing it again on July 10th. We'll read again again on 17th and on the 24th. So this is really going to be accelerated, because it's process and procedure. We have a safety setback to your height. I'm sorry. Your height is determined by you based on industry standards and the number necessary to accommodate operation of wind energy system. That's because you're gonna be getting the manufacturer's data and maybe peer review or not. There's setbacks. There's two setbacks. A safety setback, that's the ice throw, blade falls off, your system height plus 10%. So it's tip of the blade and add 10%. So the literature seems to think that that's your safety setback, insufficient for things like ice. You may not necessarily have to follow insurance, because you made every possible good intent to have a safety setback.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please, I can't. Can we just run through this?
Please finish, I'm sorry.
Hey, well, I know we have a long discussion on these. You also have a noise setback. You have this safety setback, which is a standard setback you see in zoning books. You also have a noise setback that you will determine as the special permitting authority based on the noise modeling results you have to have. The information that's gonna come out of your package, the noise modeling results in order to maintain your 10 decibel over ambient. Right now, or not to exceed... That's why that language is underlined. We're still working on that. But some performance standard, right now, we're looking at is state performance standard of not to exceed 10 decibels over ambient at the property. So two setbacks, safety, noise. Clearing, again, is a site planning issue based on your site plan information. We get into some design standards, your lighting, your color, your finish, signs, utility connections shall be in the ground. Oh, my God, I looked it up. As regarded the...[1368.12][1368.12](laughing). Some real basics, safety, and run into standards, coordination of your emergency services, unauthorized access. We get into the shadow flicker. Right now, we want the demonstration of no more than 30 minutes per day, not to exceed 10 hours per year at the property line. And again, this is a draft. We're in progress. Monitoring and maintenance. Right now, it's the applicant, so it says that material is made in reasonably required to review. Oops, it's like, I guess, the back of the... It's like one of these pages is back. Or out of order. I think... Yes, these two pages are out of order.
I got flipped.
You got flipped.
Front and back.
So I have to go from the back. Yep, let's keep going. So your monitoring and maintenance has been maintained in good condition. You will have access to records as a condition, annual inspections with a copy to you. We're still working through modifications and operations. So let's go back to this page, which is your site plan details. Sorry, it's on the... It's really got to do with your procedures. Right now, we have some language at the top of the page. We call this your fail-safe information. It's that the applicant shall also submit some material that is made in reasonably required to review the application to determine compliance with provisions of the article. Something comes up, and it's reasonable. You just can't say, you know, I want X, Y, Z that has no reasonable relationship to what you find in the application you can require. This is standard language. You're actually having your special permit list today, maybe a part of the bylaw. We've introduced a mandatory pre-application meeting in the planning department to review all this. Lots of folks sometimes just plop it in that comes in, bagged, delivered. I guess they could probably still do that. We haven't really discussed this outside the office. But I'd put it in here for now. I know the commission, the commission is under this act that before it even gets to you, let's make sure it's complete, the information's there. Otherwise, your clock is ticking. So if, in fact, you get an application that is delinquent in information requirements or delinquents in some aspect, you have a procedural denial. You didn't bring it in to our agents for review prior. You just have a procedural denial. Got you.
That's without prejudice.
Without prejudice, right. So you don't waste a lot of time asking for information. It dribbles in, your time clock is going, you run out of time. I thought it was important to have.
You can re-follow with a new fee.
We'll see you in there with the new fee. We've added your site plan details. We've added some engineering details for your foundation plans. Right now, we're saying monotube designs are permitted for large wind energy systems. We'll look at lattice towers and guide towers for smaller ones. But right now, we're saying for the bigger ones, it's a monotube design. We want engineering details. We want the wind energy system specifications, including log, manufacturer model, rotor height, all that information. Your actual power consumption over two years. Remember, this is for accessory use then. Met tower data for 12 months. Your operating details, we want the responsible party. We wanna know who is the legal entity with responsibility for operations, and we want emergency contact protocols. This is pretty standard. We find this in a lot of the models out there, including the state law. And importantly, under the procedure for review, this gets into the smaller projects. Because some of the comments that the Met Tower data might be too expensive, some of this might be not necessary. We've asked that, on this page, applications for small wind energy systems shall be subject to the requirements at the discretion of the... So if someone comes in with a little 10-kilowatt, doesn't have the Met Tower data, you are in... So it has a somewhat of a safety valve there for projects that are extremely small. Otherwise, we would be having exception after exception after exception. We simply put in a jurisprudence question. So that's some of the things we've added in a nutshell. Just tell you that application requirements, this page, you're at page three, remember them, I'm sorry. Stated together, it's actually page four. So make that change. If you look at all this, if you have any preliminary comments, fine, but given the hour, and given that you just got this tonight, jot them down, and we'll have a really thorough review of this. But you'll see a lot of this now is coming forward, addressing the comments from your first public hearing in regards to performance standards. That's the easy stuff. Setbacks, more times blade add, the safety setback, because you made a determination that you're gonna have turbines of a certain size. I'm not pushing.
Thanks. Isn't it, yeah?
Just in presentation, I don't know if you could do with it, but the arguments would go a lot smoother if we put the definitions at the end and read all the things we have, and then get into accessory use because it's covered by a lot of things. Whereas if you start off with accessory use, everyone wants to argue, 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 but these things here give us so much protection already, I think it really softens the blow there quite a bit.
Definitely the definitions up front.
Well, no, but put them in the back and realize the first thing we're talking about is setbacks, noise, 10 decibels over, all those protections are in place.
Again, you know, the formatting, we haven't numbered them.
Okay.
We formatted it, this is like, you know...
But because, A, accessories up front, it just creates an issue right up, but there's so much protection already, I think people might be more willing to be flexible on that if they understood the other points.
Again, formatting, wordsmithing, we could make it probably in August.
Part of the presentation, yeah.
Yeah, in August and September. Right now, the important thing is to take a look at, the important thing for me is put some patient results in. I did that.
Pageination, yes.
And get them in the right order.
Like you said, the order might change anyway.
And it changed, it might change.
It's just information for now.
Right now, it's information for the board on issues and criteria you're most familiar with as a regulatory board. We're really getting into design, site planning. Now we know what we're regulating. Once you know what you're regulating, then the rest of this is relatively simple. It will really accelerate. We're going to get a, the curve is going to go up here on the amount of information you're going to have. Do you want to comment on that?
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, Paul?
I had a comment on engineering details you mentioned, the actual power consumption. That resumes that there's a facility there and you're heading a turbine.
That's what we have to do. They have to be there for two years before we let them build a turbine. That's what this says.
I didn't really see that in the...
That's here.
And secondly, the met tower data, that could be very expensive for a small system. And if there is sufficient information available, something nearby, how is that tied? Is it tied specifically to the particular turbine? Or could they use some existing data?
All right. Any...
I think it's something to think about. I'm looking for an answer.
Okay, sure. Yeah, comparative nearby, why reinvent the wheel?
Because the met tower is going to be extrapolated anyway. Maybe you have something nearby that's appropriate.
Sure. It might be that you don't want the full blown met tower data for two years. You might accept data from another tower, that's extraordinary.
I think we have to look at it.
Yep, it's fine.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other comments? Okay. Do you want to go back to looking at the minutes? We tabled them until towards the end of the meeting.
Oh, I never...
I know.
Looked at them.
I know, we didn't because we were all caught up in here. The only thing...
We were thinking that Barbara Ralph might show up.
He'll go quick.
What will go?
Well, what happens is they're not, because of our staffing, they're not getting recirculated. So you read all these minutes and then we're ready to approve them next meeting. We don't have to do it today.
I think that would be a good idea.
I'm prohibited from sending them to you directly, I was told, and it's supposed to come from the office.
Right, and I think things will be getting back to normal here soon. I apologize for that.
It's okay. It's just the three weeks, three meetings in a row. I'm just trying to move them along, that's all.
No, I think it's, you can manage.
Okay.
Because it's an unusual circumstance, so I'm not terribly concerned about that.
So is this more than one coffee?
We're going to be four sets of minutes.
Next time, there'll be four meetings worth of minutes to review.
Okay.
And then they will be forwarded, all four of them, to us for our review so we can do this at our leisure at home.
Okay.
And look them over. I think we'll get better review of that. Okay?
But they're not...
Well, I'm getting them every week, but I'm not supposed to communicate to you. I've got to go through the office and there's personnel.
Yeah, there's a little busy. I'm sorry we didn't get them out.
No, I'm not complaining. I'm just worried about why we're not reviewing the minutes.
Yeah.
And it's a time when the public might want to look at them, and we can't post them until we...
Right, right. So I'm trying to move them along as fast as possible.
The public gets them even as draft form before you sign or vote as drafts.
Oh, okay, good.
Post it as draft.
They're always available, the public gets a draft.
All right, well, then that's not so bad then.
After we vote on it. Okay, so then we need a motion to table the acceptance.
If we table the minutes.
Okay.
Second?
They're on the table.
Been moved in second. We table any action on the minutes until the next meeting.
Till next week.
The 10th, okay.
Not indefinitely.
Not indefinitely, no, until the next meeting.
Until next week.
Okay. So all in favor of that?
All right.
Nobody's opposed. All right, we move on to correspondence. Brian, did you have anything or not?
I do see this.
Okay, because there wasn't any folder here, so...
You can keep it ahead.
Okay, folks, I need a...
Motion to adjourn.
Does it second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.